All right, perfect. Thank you. All right, welcome to Tuesday, to the Board of Selecting Meeting for Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. So because this is a virtual meeting and due to open meeting laws, we're having the meeting virtually. So there is a number for folks to call in, for residents to call in. Now what we're gonna do is I'm gonna pass it to Jason, and Jason's gonna give you a different number. The number that I'm showing now will work, however, please grab a pen and we're gonna give the residents a different number to call in. So Jason, can you just slowly give the res, provide the residents a number to call in a few times, please?
Of course, Mr. Chairman. So it is 781-565-8134. And I'll read it again.
All right, one more time, because I always do, I'm gonna say 781-565-8134.
That's correct.
All right, perfect. And just for the residents, because our first scheduled item is at seven o'clock, it's an open, um, public hearing, public meeting, public hearing for the tax rate hearing. So if any of the residents would like to call in now, please do that. Again, one more time, because it's 781-565-8134. So before we get started, however, team, what I'd like to do is I want to pass the floor over to Mr. Montori. We have a special guest. So Mr. Montori, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for taking this issue out of order. This was gonna be part of my report later on in the evening, but I wanted to start the meeting by taking this opportunity to let the board know, as well as the residents know, that this past Friday, I appointed Captain Joe, Joseph Kearns, as the next Fire Chief for the town of Tewksbury. Joe has been with the department for over 30 years, beginning as a Call Firefighter in 1988. He has worked his way up through the ranks within the department. Now, he was a firefighter, moving up to Lieutenant and Captain most recently. He's been active in the community. He currently serves on the Middlesex Conneor Time and Board. He was Union President for the past 14 years. Lot of dealings with Joe. I have the complete confidence that he will be an excellent chief. He has big shoes to fill with Mike, Chief Mike Hazel retiring in January, but after going through the process of an assessment center and interviews, I feel that Joe has all the qualities and capabilities that we're looking for in our next chief. And I'm excited for him, for him in his new endeavor. I'm excited to have made the appointment. And I'm pleased to announce tonight that he will be the next Fire Chief effective starting January 4th of 2021. And Joe's here tonight with us if the board has any comments, questions, and just introduce him.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much, Mr. Montori, and welcome, Chief. What I'd like to do is just go around the table. So how about Ms. Tronick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would just like to say congratulations, Chief Kearns, Acting Chief Kearns, um, I don't know what they call you, um, until you, uh, when is the actual appointment, Richard?
Uh, January 4th.
Okay. So, um, I just wanna say that I think that we are very lucky to have you as our next chief. I look forward to supporting your efforts of you and your team. I think that Tewksbury is blessed with the fire department that we have. Not only are they great civil servants, they are dedicated to the community, and we see them stepping up to the plate time after time. So I just want to appreciate that and look forward to working with you and supporting your efforts. Congratulations.
Very good. How about Ms. Wellman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to extend my congratulations to Acting, or interim, or let's see, Appointed Chief Kearns.
Hello, Captain. We'll call him Captain.
How about Captain, Captain Kearns? And I've, I've been fortunate to know you for a few years, and I think that you've done an excellent job in leading our wonderful fire department in the work that they do, the very important, essential work that they do for our community, is a really good role for you. It's a great fit, and we are very fortunate to have you and an excellent team for you to work with. Thank you. Congratulations again.
Very good. How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Keeping it brief, I wanna say thanks to Chief Hazel. I know he's got another month, month and a couple of days. He's gonna be a big shoes to fill and a great guy that, that served the town well. To Captain Joe Kearns, welcome. You've been a staple in the community for a long time. Not only are you a good bowler, you're, uh, you're knowledgeable on both sides of the table, which I, I appreciate. So when it comes to union or management, I think you see the big picture. I think you're level-headed, and your collaboration and diplomatic approach is, is gonna be a huge key moving forward through the years at the helm for Tewksbury. So thank you very much for stepping into this role and putting yourself in this position. And I'm, I'm really happy with the town management, town manager's approach to fill that position. Very, um, very responsible and wide-open approach. Gave everybody an opportunity to apply for the position, and the best candidate was selected. So congratulations, Joe, and thank you, Mr. Town Manager and Mr. Kelly, for doing a lot of the legwork. Thank you.
And how about Mr. Krappman?
Got it right now, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna start with Joe, makes it easier than Acting Chief, uh, Next Chief, or what you wanna call him. He's been a staple in this community for years. I know he has the respect of all his fellow firefighters. He's always been lobbying, working to do the best for his team, and they do the best for us. So I couldn't be happier. This is, you know, we're gonna miss Mike. Mike did a wonderful job for years, and he's well-deserved retirement, and I wanna congratulate him and thank you for all his service. But Joe, I couldn't imagine anybody better to fill those shoes. I know what you do for this community. I know the respect you have in this community, and I know you're gonna work well with everybody. So it makes Tewksbury a better place because of your dedication and your work. So I really appreciate it, and congratulations.
Okay, perfect. I'll say the last things, Captain. So again, shout out to Captain Hazel, um, going out on top, and it's pretty cool that we have an overlap now, so you can kinda make that transition, a smooth transition. So again, hats off to Chief Hazel for everything he's done for the community and for the force. I would like to say, very similar to interviewing for the Police Chief, Captain Scott Kettle and Lieutenant Daniel Swickie, as well as Captain Joe Kearns, it was unbelievable how all three of these gentlemen, they, they, they had community first, Tewksbury first, residents second, and most importantly, they had the, the men and women of the, of the Tewksbury Fire Department first and foremost in their hearts. So it's, um, it was a pleasure and an honor, very humbling to go through the interviewing process with three solid candidates. Like I said, all of them is very close, but at the end of the day, you know, congratulations to Captain Kearns. So, so Joe, I'll put you on the spot. Any words, any words of wisdom for the residents?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanna thank Mr. Montori and the board for the call, showing me. I look forward to this department. The members of the Tewksbury Fire Department are excellent. It's a privilege to be able to lead them. We've always appreciated the support that you as a board and Mr. Montori has shown. As you guys mentioned, you know, a tip of the hat to Chief Hazel during this pandemic, he has been loving to keep our, our members safe, the community safe. So, um, you know, I look forward to this. I can't say enough how much I appreciate the opportunity and the confidence and the kind words all of you guys show. You know, I just certainly, um, look forward to living up to the expectations laid on the table and to work as a team and what's best for this community. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Awesome, very good.
Mr. Chairman, can I just jump in for one more note?
Please, Mr. Montori, please.
So I just wanted to mention one thing, you know, as we went through this process and as we go through any process in, in making appointments, we always discuss the, the qualities and the abilities and attributes that a person brings to a position, but there are also some human side, size to these discussions we have. And this one note I wanna bring up, because I think it's important, that Joe mentioned during his interview. When Joe talked about one of his proudest moments in the department, he said, um, working with his dad, um, when he started in the department was one of his proudest moments. So I wanna just mention that Joe's dad was a Lieutenant, Ed Kearns, in the Fire Department. And as happy as Joe is, as proud as Joe is, is of this moment, I gotta believe his dad is too. So, Joe, this is for your dad. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You're, you're 100% right. You know, it's, um, you know, I'm pretty much growing up trying to be a firefighter to, to hit the pinnacle is unbelievable. I can't say enough about my family. You know, my parents and my family, you know, it's, it's not always the easiest thing when I was Union President. You know, but they all understood it was for the benefit of all the residents of Tewksbury. And, you know, I'm lucky to be in that position, and thank you, Mr. Montori.
Very good. All right, thanks again. Joe, we'll see you soon, my friend. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I have Tabasco sauce in my eye. That's not a tear. I just want...
Mr. Brian Dick is on a roll tonight. We have boiled in hot sauce.
I'm gonna stay on mute now, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Okay, so what I'd like to do is move, again, we're gonna move to the tax rate hearing, and because it's a public meeting, we, um, let's open up, do we have a motion to open the public hearing? I'm sorry, do we have a motion to waive the public, um, the public motion reading? I'll get it straight.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing and waive the reading of the hearing.
Second. Mr. Burke, and because, just for the residents, because this is a virtual meeting, we need to take a roll call vote, each and every vote, so I'll just call out the names, just tell me how you vote. Ms. Tronick?
Yes.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Krappman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. So what we'll do, um, very similar to many public hearings, what we'll do is simple. We'll start off with the presentation, we'll pause, I'll open it up to the residents, um, we'll see if any residents have anything to, to offer. We'll close the public hearing, and then we'll go back to the, uh, we'll go back to the board for discussion, and we'll go from there. So with that being said, I'd like to pass it over to Mr. Montori and Mr. Ms. Joanne Foley for the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing brings a tear to people's eyes more than talking about the tax rate, so we'll have that discussion tonight. The presentation tonight was put together by Chief Assessor Joanne Foley with our recommendation for the commercial industrial personal property tax shift for FY '21. The discussion tonight is about if the board wants to shift the burden further to the commercial properties, keep it the same, or shift more to the residential burden of the tax levy to the residential share of the tax levy. The presentation will go through the, um, the decisions that need to be made tonight. We'll go through the various options that we reviewed and our recommendation, and we'll answer any questions that the board has. But this is an annual decision that needs to be made to the board to adopt the residential factor, the municipal residential factor for the, for the town, and that in turn will set the tax rate for the town. So with that, Joanne, you're gonna be able to share your screen?
Hopefully.
Perfect. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll charge it over to Joanne to make the presentation, and we'll answer any questions after that.
Please, thank you.
Well, thank you, everyone, and thanks to the board for hosting this, um, meeting. And I was saying earlier how quickly a, a year flies. It seems like we were just here doing this not too long ago, but a year has passed, and hopefully we'll be able to get to a quick decision with respect to the taxation. I'd also like to thank my staff, who, um, was a, is a, I always say we're a small but mighty group. You know, COVID really affected everybody. It affected the way we processed things and got things done, and the staff was great with working from home on their own machines and, um, making sure we didn't fall behind. We were determined not to have to put out third quarter preliminary tax bills, so they were really fabulous with respect to, um, doing what they needed to do to help us be where we are tonight. Also like to thank steadfast leader Richard, Steve, and the other financial people in the group, Kelly and Pam. It's always great to work with a positive cohesive group, makes the work that we do so much easier. So we'll get ourselves rolling here. We start with what's the purpose of the hearing today? It's allocating the local property tax levy among five property classes for the fiscal year 2021, um, and choosing the selection of the minimum residential factor. Second thing is whether to allow residential exemption. Third purpose would be to whether, whether to allow a small commercial exemption, and the fourth would be whether to allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. So what is the residential exemption? A residential exemption shifts the tax burden from lower-valued properties to higher-valued properties and to those owned by non-residents. This exemption is typically seen in communities that can be classified as large cities, communities with an abundance of apartments and resort communities. In fiscal year 2020, 15 communities use a residential exemption, including Boston, Brookline, Everett, Malden, Antucket, Somerville, and Waltham. Historically, the board has voted no on this exemption. A small commercial exemption, a small, a small business exemption, sorry, lowers the taxes on parcels occupied by small businesses and shifts those taxes to other commercial and industrial taxpayers. In FY 2020, 14 communities use this exemption, including Braintree, Seconk, Swampscott, and Rantham. Historically, the board has voted no on this. Open space discount. An open space discount would allow a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space. This discount shifts the tax burden to the residential class. However, there is no land classified as open space in Tewksbury the way that open space is defined by the state, and historically, the board has not granted a discount for property classified as open space. So what is the tax shift? Tax shift is basically shifting the tax rate. You'll move the tax burden to be raised between the residential and open space classes and the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. So all properties classified into five different categories: residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal property. So where does all of this start? For us, it starts with us processing the deeds that come through the registry every month. This, this, the calendar year 2019, which is what we use to then set the values for fiscal year 21's taxes, we process 884 deeds. We take those deeds, and then we identify what are our arms-length sale. And an arms-length sale is a sale between a willing buyer and a seller with no unusual circumstances involved in the sale. So out of the 884 deeds, we had 293 single-family homes that were arms-length sales, 125 condominium sales, 23 commercial and industrial sales, and that includes commercial condominiums. So to help us determine the, um, I, the arms-length sales, we use sales questionnaires, we have conversations with brokers and realtors and developers, we make physical visits to every single property, and we use MLS to review each of the properties, and we also use aerial photography for the review of properties. So to determine the valuation, that helps to then set the tax rate and how things will be split, we analyze all those market sales. We then make the necessary market adjustments to all of the properties. We take all of that data, and we give it to the Department of Revenue, and they review it all. They review not only the values, but the counts, and then all property adjustments, including our new growth, are also reviewed by the Department of Revenue. So I always like to start with a little quick recap of what we did in fiscal year 2020. So you can see in fiscal year 2020, um, the average sing, this is with the 1.5, 1.56 shift that was selected. The average single-family home increased in value 7%, which made the tax change 7.9% and gave them an increase of $506. The average residential condominium, um, increased 10.5% in value, which gave it an 11.4% increase and a $555 tax increase in tax bill. And the average commercial property, um, increased in 8.5% value, which was a 9.9% tax change with the shift, which gave it an increase of $2,120 in, in a tax bill. Keeping in mind that, um, you know, the big change in the increase in values was the debt exemptions that went in for that last year, which is why those are relatively high numbers for us. So, starting with last year's fiscal year, how do we move forward? Well, we start with the fiscal year's 20 levy, which is the 81.5 million. We add two and a half percent growth, which is the 2 million, and then we also add new growth that's been certified by the state, and that's a, that's just under the 1.5 million. That gives us a subtotal, and then we add in the debt exclusion, which is the 12 million, which brings us to our fiscal year 21's levy, which is $97,389,029. And then, so to then take that levy and turn it into calculating a single tax rate, you take the levy and you divide it by the total assessed value for the community, and that would give us $17.69 tax rate, which means both residents and residential properties and commercial industrial would both have a tax rate of $17.69 if no shift were to take place. So this is really the meat of the presentation here. We have the, we start with the levy, and you'll see the first line in the top chart, the CIP shift of 1 is what we just talked about, where the tax rate would be $17.69 for both residential and commercial, and, and commercial. And then it lists the various shifts of the 1.55 through the 1.60, and also lives the map, lists the maximum shift of the 1.75, um, tax shift. The one highlighted in blue, the 1.56 or the, um, MRF, um, .8885 is what Town Manager and Finance Group is recommending, uh, which would give a tax rate of $15.72 for residents and $27.60 for commercial industrial. Just looking at the bottom, um, chart, which highlights the 1.56 shift, you, looking at fiscal year's 20 values to fiscal year 21, you'll see that the average single-family home, um, increased in value 5%. And the average residential condominium increased in value 1.1%, and the average commercial property increased just under the 1%. So what does that mean with respect to taxes? So the average single-family would increase a 3.3% tax change. The average residential condominium would actually have a slight decrease, as would the commercial properties. So in the very far right, under the FY 21 tax change at 1.56, the average single-family home would increase, taxes would increase $231. The average residential condominium would decrease $28. The average commercial property would decrease 141. Keeping in mind that this is just averages, so there are certainly many properties, you know, there are some condominiums that will have a increase in value. It's just that the average of them won't. It depends upon, you know, modifications that might have changed, or if one complex sells harder than another. But same thing with commercial properties. There are some commercial properties that will see a slight increase because maybe they had a small addition last year, so their tax bill will actually increase. What we're showing here is just the average, um, changes that would take place with the 1.56 shift. So this chart compares the fiscal, the prior fiscal years to the proposed shift for the fiscal year, um, 2021. You'll see that the percentage of the residential has, has a slight decrease of .23%, and which then translate obviously into a slight increase in the commercial industrial side of things of positive .23%. You'll notice within the commercial industrial that, um, the personal property had a slight increase compared to the others, which had a slight decrease. And that's basically because the Department of Revenue came out with a new way for us to, um, value utility properties, and they all saw a pretty significant increase in their valuation. So that's, that's partly what that shift is there. So this, this chart, um, again, shows the preceding, um, couple of fiscal years, 18 through the proposed 2021. It shows the average single-family homes, the residential and the commercial, and it shows their, their respective increases, which we just covered. And also, the bottom of the chart shows the average tax bills, what the increase in impacts will have, um, with the 1.56 shift. So again, this is sort of looking at a quick pie chart of fiscal year 2020. On the right shows what fiscal year 2020 would have looked like without a tax shift, which you can see that the residential portion was 83.54%, and the CIP, or the commercial, industrial, personal property was 1646. Once the shift was enacted, you can see that the commercial ate up a bigger piece of the pie with a 25.67% shift, and the residential's shift decreased to 74.33%. In looking at the 1.56 shift, you'll see a very similar picture to last year. Without the shift, you'll see that the residential, um, pie chart on the right shows that the residence, um, portion is 83.40%, and the CIP is 16.60%. So looking at the chart on the left, which reflects the 1.56 shift, the residential portion, um, will decrease to 74.10, and the CIP will increase to 25.90. the residential portion, um, will decrease to seventy-four point ten and the CIP will increase to twenty-five point ninety. And this is just a quick chart that shows the, um, levy history. You can see, um, you know, as I explained before, there's always a two and a half percent increase plus new growth, um, which right now, um, puts us at the ninety-seven, um, point thirty-nine category. And this year for excess levy, um, the way the, the numbers will work out, we'll actually only leave approximately seven thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars as excess levy capacity. So everybody always likes to do comparisons and, um, because there aren't, I, right now, I don't believe any of the surrounding communities have yet to certify their FY twenty-one tax rates. I know a few of them have recently had their hearings, but I don't believe they've set them yet. Um, so we use twenty-twenty's data. Um, so the first, um, highlighted in yellow field of Tuxbury shows the twenty-twenty values where we were. And then the second one shows the twenty-twenty-one proposed values, um, what we would pay for, where we would lie within the other communities. And you can see really pretty much both of them, we're still pretty much middle of the pack, um, with respect to residential, um, taxes. And, you know, it, it seems to me like that's a good thing because we don't ever seem to have any trouble selling homes or condominiums in this town. So, um, we're still a very attractive, uh, place to be with our tax rate. So that really brings us to the conclusion of, um, what we're here to do tonight, which is, um, the required actions, allocating the local property tax levy among the five classes for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one and the selection of the minimum residential factor. Town manager is recommending the, um, MRF of point eight eight eight-five or the one point five-six shift. Um, whether to allow a residential exemption, Town Manager has recommended no. And whether to allow a small commercial exemption, again, Town Manager has recommended no. And whether to allow a discount of up to twenty-five percent for property classified as open space and the Town Manager has recommended no. And that's really the conclusion of my presentation.
All right, Joanne, thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Montori, anything to add before I open it up to the public and the board?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so Joanne, don't go far. What we're gonna do is, um, at this point, Jason, do we have any residents on the line?
No callers, Mr. Chairman, but I would probably allow about thirty seconds for the stream to catch up.
Yep, absolutely fair. And just for the residents, one more time, and why not? Uh, to call in for the residents is seven eight one, five six five, eighty-one thirty-four. Again, seven eight one, five six five, eighty-one thirty-four. So let's just give a little bit of a time for the residents. And again, I think it's very important to wait for the residents to close the public hearing and then we'll jump in. We'll dive in as a board.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, would you like me to stop sharing or is there something you'd like me to leave out?
I think this is perfect. We'll probably like in pass, we'll bounce from slide to slide, so I think this is perfect.
Okay.
Um, but like I said, I'm sure we'll, we'll quite certain we'll bounce from so- slide to slide.
That's fine. Thank you.
So I'll set in the ba- batting order, so we'll go with Ms. Tronick, Ms. Welman, Mr. Brian Dick and Mr. Krabner. Just for the residents, I always pick out of a hat to make it very fair in front of my family, so no set lineup.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Well, Ms. Tronick, we're just gonna give up two more minutes just for residents to see if any residents want to weigh in.
My apologies.
No, you're good. Well, it's that time. Jason, do we have any residents that like to speak?
No callers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. So I'd like to, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second? Okay, roll call vote. Ms. Tronick?
Aye.
Ms. Welman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Krabner?
Aye.
The chair votes aye as well. Okay, the public hearing is closed. Why don't we open it up? Let's start. How about, um, Ms. Tronick, you lead it off?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So first of all, I want to apologize, um, for not being able to be on screen. I am having some wifi internet connection, so fortunately I am able to join by phone with technology. So I appreciate that. And I want to thank, um, Joanne for putting together such a great presentation, which I actually, um, had in front of me, so I was able to follow along. For many of you who have watched this hearing over the years as I've served on this board, you will know that I am a proponent of a larger tax shift. However, this year, um, given the pandemic and given the, um, impact on businesses, I do agree with the one point five shift that is, that is being recommended by the chairman, um, that will kind of keep things, uh, somewhat status quo for residents and business owners. So that is, I have no questions regarding the, um, presentation was very well done and, um, appreciated the clear and concise explanation. Most importantly, I always, uh, appreciate the comparison to the total valuation slide, which is always my favorite. Thank you.
And thank you, Ms. Tronick. How about Ms. Welman?
Hi, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Um, I had a couple of questions from Ms. Foley. Um, I would, I wanted to know if you have a comparison of our, of our rates, not just the valuations with our, um, peer communities? Or if Mr. Montori might have something like that.
I don't have one readily available, but certainly can get one. It, it is a difficult thing, however, to compare rates from one community to another because with respect to valuation is so different, plus, you know, obviously there are shifts as well.
Sure. Um, I see it come up a lot when we talk about tax rates, so that's why I asked and I appreciate that.
I can send a comparison tomorrow, Jane.
Sure, that'd be great. Um, and then I wanted to know if you, for, for the benefit of residents who might be watching, um, if you could explain why excess levy capacity is significant? Uh, because it's, it's now just seventy-four hundred dollars. And so that's, I think that's interesting for people to understand.
Yeah, so basically, um, it means that, um, with respect to when we fill out our recap sheet of, uh, you know, our revenues that are coming in and their expenditures that are going out, we were able to, pretty much between your levy limit, which is the total amount you're able to raise versus what we are actually raising on the recap sheet, um, we're only leaving that much money left basically uncollected, um, which means that we're making good use of the money that's coming in into the appropriate buckets of what we, of what the town needs in order to spend its, um, allocations.
Okay, thank you. Um, and so like Ms. Tronick, um, I've been an advocate of the CIP shift in the past and keeping the minimum residential factor under one. Um, but also like Ms. Tronick, um, I don't advocate changing that this year. I think keeping the status quo is, is the best environment we can offer our business community who is suffering so much through this, this, um, pandemic and all the implications that they're, um, they're suck- they're having to deal with right now. So I think, um, I will support keeping it at the Town Manager's recommendation of one point five-six or point zero, uh, zero point eight eight eight-five for the MRF. Thank you. Great presentation, lots of information. I appreciate it so much. Thank you and your team for their work.
Thank you.
How about Mr. Brian Dick?
Thank you very much. Uh, thank you, Ms. Foley, for your, uh, presentation and thanks for providing us with the documentation, Mr. Town Manager. I, a couple of quick, quick questions and I might mention briefly real quick, but Mrs. Foley, on the, could you just explain that personal property change that businesses had? Where you, I said something about utility businesses or was it across the board or?
So, uh, first, when I was speaking, uh, with respect to the, um, increase for, it was strictly with personal property with the utilities. So, um, utility properties used to be just, um, valued, um, with a net book value, it was called. And so they basically reported, um, their own net book value. And, um, a few years ago, um, there were several sales that took place with some big utilities. Um, Boston, who always has a big, um, budget for going to ATB and things like that, um, basically took, um, took it to court and felt that the way the state was regulating us to value those properties was undervaluing, um, the utility companies. And so after the, a couple of the court cases were decided, um, with respect to valuation, um, the Department of Revenue changed the valuation method of the utility companies to be no longer net book value but a blended, um, value. So what we did as a community was hire, um, a personal property, um, company that came in and valued, um, those utility companies for us and they saw a significant increase in their valuation.
Gotcha, gotcha. So I didn't know if it was the personal property of the businesses in town that had a change. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for me. And then another question is on the growth re- of residential property versus commercial. And I, I know you had a slide up on two thousand nineteen, I think. And I know, I think we're talking two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one, is that the, what you're showing there? Or was it two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one? But I thought I saw the regi- residential property go up seven percent, commercial up nine percent? Something like that? And then this year was five percent and a decrease of point oh eight?
Right. Yeah, so here, um, we're seeing the five percent increase for the average single-family home, the one percent for the residential condo and the eight percent, I mean, the point eight percent for the commercial. And then, yes, the, from fiscal year, so for the prior fiscal year changes from nineteen to twenty, the average single-family went up seven percent, the average residential condo went up ten point five and the average commercial went up eight point five. Condominiums that year, residential condominiums that year just took off like crazy.
Yeah, it's just, uh, it's incredible from one year, the decrease in condo values and commercial property. And I'm, I'm sure some of it could be the pandemic on the commercial side, right?
Yeah, yep. I think we're just seeing the very tips of that. I mean, we are aware of probably, I think right now, maybe about five businesses that, um, have gone out of business due to the pandemic. Um, so I think we'll, it, commercial properties for this year were really basically valued on the previous years' income and expense. So next year will be a whole different picture of that commercial entity for us, yeah, for all the communities.
Yeah, good to point out and to, and to point out that, you know, it's been two good growth years as we're getting maybe to the ceiling of the residential values, but it's still five percent. Um, it's significant if someone sold their property as a resident versus commercial, so struggling. And then the last thing, yeah, and I know in Mr. Montori's memorandum to the selectmen, he mentioned the prop evaluation total. So if I was gonna ask you just to, and to point out here tonight that out of the, if you looked at the property valuation as a pie, a hundred pieces or a hundred percent versus who's paying the total tax levy percentage-wise, could you just point that out to us tonight? For the record, so saying, so what I mean by is, is, uh, I think, I think the commercial businesses, right? Are the valuation, the total, the, the percentage of the total valuation of the town property is sixteen percent or so? And they're paying twenty-five percent of the tax levy?
Right, so I just pulled up on that pie chart for the fiscal year twenty-one tax burden. And that's exactly right. Um, so without the shift, the CIP only makes up sixteen point six percent. Shifting it already to the one point five-six, which is the same shift as last year, you're right, they then pay twenty-five point nine percent share of the taxes, even though they physically only really valuation-wise make up sixteen point six percent.
So they, they pay, they, they're paying their full share, uh, right now. Um, you know, as we discussed year to year, uh, shifting this rate. So I appreciate the presentation, answering my questions. I just, just as a statement, you know, uh, in, in the Town Manager's memorandum, you know, when considering the impact of COVID nineteen and the changes in values, I believe this recommendation is a fair. So the one point five-six, we should stick to that as a, as a board. Approach will help maintain the town's reputation, attract business. So as we talk about taxes and raising this rate or moving the, the needle per se, um, sometimes we need to maybe, uh, work harder and bring businesses in to Tuxbury. So this, keeping the shift at one point five-six will allow us to show that we do care not only for our residents but also for our struggling businesses this year. You know, a couple of things that we've done in the past, you know, this, this pandemic's been eight months and we've had to work with the, the government, the, the state on opening and reopening and opening at twenty-five percent and allowing businesses, restaurants, bars to, to use outside, um, seating to kind of meet their, their nut per se. Um, it could be a potential another lockdown for businesses. And, um, you know, not, not only are businesses struggling, I do understand that residents are struggling too. So looking at some of the things we did this year, about, for example, the stormwater fee at a flat rate for the residents at seventy-five dollars, that's not the case for commercial businesses. Um, that, that fee for commercial businesses can be, uh, doubled, tripled, quadrupled based on the amount of, um, I think, what do they call it, impervious area that generates the runoff for the stormwater. So the bigger the business, obviously their share is more versus, um, for all residents or three units below, we, we said, hey, it's just gonna be a flat fee. But those businesses got whacked when we did the stormwater fee. And I'm in, I was in favor of the stormwater fee for the town, for the businesses, for the residents, because it's important. And it was voted on town meeting, right? Town meeting voted, the residents had their say and, and wanted us to, uh, move forward with that stormwater enterprise fund. So, you know, just thinking about whole values being up, businesses' valuations being down. Um, last meeting, we talked about providing relief for businesses. How do we do that? No, Mr. Krabner was very, um, open and honest about, you know, we got, we got licenses coming up for renewal at the, in the first of the year and things like that. And this is an immediate way at least to kind of help businesses a little bit by not shifting that needle to the, not moving it from a one point five-six shift as recommended by the Town Manager, moving it, say, per one point five-seven shift, that's gonna hit businesses again in the pocketbook. Where I think if we stay at one point five-six, and I agree with Ms. Tronick and Mrs. Welman, um, I think that's the best thing, most fair thing for our businesses as well as our residents. And, uh, what's nice to see, I guess, is, is the, is the residential tax rate isn't as, as big as it was last year due to the debt exemptions, as Mrs. Foley pointed out. So I appreciate the presentation. I appreciate the board's thought process through this. Um, as we, as we, uh, think about our seniors and our residents and, and all the other, all the residents, um, I understand the burden of taxes. But, um, me being a business owner in town as well as a resident, I pay on both sides and I feel this is the most fairest way, um, to, to stay at the one point five si- five-six shift. Mr. Chairman, I go back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brian Dick. How about Mr. Krabner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you know, I, I agree with all my, uh, fellow selectmen. Um, a very well thought out, uh, uh, on this presentation. Uh, each year we go through this and it's always a difficult, uh, decision as we go, how are we gonna be? how are we going to be fair to the residents and be fair to the businesses? I think last year, the recommendation was to actually go lower to the businesses, and we actually raised it higher than what the recommendation was to give the residents a little leeway and put more on the businesses. As my fellow selectmen, Mr. Dix mentioned, the businesses are really hurting. We're working to help them, but we have bills to pay. And hopefully, we're going to get through this. I think the fair thing is to stay the course and not make any changes. I agree with the town managers' recommendations this year. I think it's fair to stay that way, keep everybody at the rate that they currently are. And, you know, and we can talk about the licenses another time, with the renewals and those things, to see if we can help them either further. And working with our delegation to also see how we can help some of the businesses that are in need as well. But thank you very much, this is a very well put together presentation as usual. And it's very helpful for the residents to be able to see this, of how we come up with our decision. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. So I'll try to be short and sweet here. So I always say democracy equals multiple viewpoints. And this is absolutely unequivocally a compromise. I would start off by saying last year was a black eye for all. We talked about the debt exclusion, it was our third debt exclusion for the high school. And out of the 350 or whatever it is, plus communities in Massachusetts, very few have three ongoing debt exclusions. So again, I think this is a compromise, albeit this pandemic has, has absolutely hurt businesses. Some businesses are actually doing pretty good in certain sectors. But again, I totally get it, that all sectors are not equal. But I also believe that some businesses are doing well under the pandemic, just like liquor stores, to name a few, and you have your Home Depots and whatnot. So what I'd like to do quickly, if you don't mind, Mr. Montori, we did have subsequent handouts regarding the tax shift. So what I'd like to do is just to share that quickly with the board, if that's okay with the board. And then Joanne, what I'll do is I'll bounce it right back to your PowerPoint. Okay, it's just an Excel, it's an Excel, and I think, again, we all have this as a board through Mr. Montori in the package. So let me know if that's coming up at all.
Yep.
I see you.
Okay. And again, this is a, this is a compromise, it's not us versus them, it's not residents versus businesses. I will say, as far as our community and being very senior, I always, we're going to push for the senior folks. You know, just because the housing value goes up, doesn't mean the social security goes up. So I think that's, it's a large, you know, large portion. We have one of the more senior communities in the Merrimack Valley. I think that merits consideration as well as just folks out of work. It's hit everyone and anyone, I don't care if you're zero to 100, 2020 has been unkind to most. So my, my plea to the board, if we look at these, again, just for the residents, this is a further breakdown of the recommended 1.56. And you can see, you can see the breakdown for single family homes, residential condos and commercial. And as we go down, we will up the ladder, you know, from 1.57. I'm really fixated on this 1.58 number with the resident factor being 0.08845. You can see it brings the tax change, residents, oh, by the way, had the highest tax rate, increase as far as property value, I think we all get that. But if we look at this one, just, just play with, you know, a little plea here, look at this 1.58 CIP shift. We're talking about now we get the tax change under 3% for the residents. Condo folks have to be happy, condo folks really got whacked last year because of the increase. But now you can see, even with the 1.56 and/or the 1.58 condo, it's still a negative change, a negative 1.0 change, tax, tax rate change of 50, negative $52. And then if we look at the commercial, I still think a 0.07, because when I see negatives for the commercial, I don't see negatives for the resident. As far as the tax change, I start to just question, see if we can do a little bit better. And again, for the, my big thing is a 0.07, I think is very reasonable, even at the 1.58 rate for commercials, and we all know they're, they're a hurting entity. We're still looking at a very subtle 160, $160 increase with the recommendation of a 1.58. So again, I, democracy equals multiple viewpoints. I feel like we do have a core section of our residents that also deserve a break. And again, I don't think it's a significant break, but as a, again, this is only my opinion. You know, coming onto this board, we can alter, we, because of our town government, it's very rare that we can make a decision to actually impact taxes. And that's one reason why I took the job, is to kind of put the brakes on resident taxes. As we all know, we're 83% residential. So this is, in my opinion, our opportunity, my opportunity to say, hey, what are we doing for the residents when it comes to shifting the burden? And again, looking at this line item, I'm comfortable with the 1.58. I think it's very insignificant across the board, but still significant across the board, if that makes any sense. So that was my plea, I wanted to share with the board, just to kind of get my thoughts or my angle. I'm just wondering, any feedback, any, any, any feedback from the board, considering a potentially 1.5 CPI shift?
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could jump in, if I could?
Please.
Any other year, I'd be absolutely in agreement with you. I would say, you know, that's a, it's insignificant, the businesses, you know, collective revenue in our town, they use our roads, they do the different things, and, you know, they provide services, but they use a lot of our facilities and our roadways, and the residents pay for a lot of those different things. My concern is, I also see a lot of businesses closing in this town. I, I, I know this probably wouldn't be the one to do it, but I don't want to, I want to encourage businesses to come here, where I see a lot of places closing. We've had two banks recently close, the Eastern Bank closed, Santana Banks now closing. You know, businesses that have been here for 20, 30 years, French's, Rapid Cafe, just to name, you know, skewers, there's, there's a lot of open spots in this town. And, and they pay a percentage of those taxes, they're paying like 20, like I said, 25% of the taxes in town when we, when we do this queue. And I think we need to really bring them in. You know, we are going to have better years, and they're coming. I know we are, the market's going up, we're going to get through this epidemic, and we're going to, you know, be stronger on the other side. And I think that may be a good time to look at it. I just, and I know this isn't a big shift. I, my perspective is, I wouldn't want to change it, I'd want to encourage businesses. I think we need to do the best we can to keep them here, help them, just show a sign that we hear how businesses are struggling. They're working everything they could possibly do to keep their employees working and trying to get them hours, even though they're closing, the governor's shutting them down at 9:30 at night. There's just so much going on. And just to add a little bit more to it, even though it's just a little bit more, I don't want to throw anything else on their plate, that's my perspective on it. I would love to give the residents a fee, I mean, a cut. I just don't think this is the year that we can possibly do it, that's my perspective. I appreciate yours, and I, you know, and that's why we have these discussions, but that's where I feel. But thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Kratman. Exactly, that's why we have these discussions. That's why folks don't like politics, because you can't have a healthy debate. You know, you like red, I like green, don't hate me. So I love it, that's what we're supposed to have, these type of conversations, so.
I always respect our opinion, so there, we both agree.
Any other, would any other board members, again, you don't have to, I just wanted to share with you, I don't know if, would I like the board members?
Yeah, I would, actually. I did the little raise hand thing in the participants portion of the chat. So, yeah, I, I appreciate your sentiment, I'm, I want to see a, like, senior tax relief. And so any increase to residents, particularly to our seniors, I feel keenly. And, you know, those numbers are sort of de minimis. So it sort of seems like these are, these are changes that would be bearable in, in the market today. To your point, there are businesses that are doing very well. And there are, to Mr. Kratman's point, there are others that are, that are struggling and some failing. That's not just in Tuxbury, that's everywhere. My concern with, with increasing it is, once you increase the shift, you don't go backward. You almost never go backward, because when you go up, you can't, you can't bring it back, because it increases the resident tax so much, because we shift so much. We have not a huge, if we had a 50/50, we were like Burlington, we had a much bigger commercial class, the residents wouldn't feel that so much if we were to move it back. But because we have only 16, 17% of our, of our tax base in commercial, we're never going to shift it back, once we go up, we're never going back, because it's just too painful. And I think that we did that last year because, because of the debt exclusion, and so we did what we could to mitigate that increase. But I think to remain competitive on the business rates, if we raise our rates, we're going to really start to push the ceiling of the business tax rates in, in our peer communities. And so if I'm a business and I'm looking to locate in a community that's got land, got infrastructure, got sewer systems, I'm looking at our peer communities, and it's going to cost more. And I don't want it to be Tuxbury that loses on that deal. And I'm not sure that this would do that, Mr. Chairman, I'm not. But I'm uncomfortable right now with making a shift at that rate. I think that it might be worth looking at in a future year, when commercial businesses may be doing better. But once you go up, you never go back. And we have, our neighbor Wilmington does the maximum allowable shift. And it's, it's, you know, hurtful to some of their businesses. Some of the big businesses over there, L3 and others, it's a cost of doing this business. But for some of the smaller ones, it's not. And so your point is really well taken, and, and I share that concern with the residents tremendously. And I think it's something that we should work, we should continue to work on. Thank you very much.
We need to send the folks, the businesses at Wilmington a memo then, right? So future gen item.
We do actually have, have had some of their businesses moved to Tuxbury, actually. So it's, it's no joke, it's a real thing, so, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right, well, I said my piece, so maybe Joanne, if you'd like to bring up the slide, we can, we'll see what the pleasure of the board is. And maybe we'll go to the final slide that had all, yep, perfect. Any other comments, Mr. Montori, or from the board?
No, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, so we went through, so what is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a recommendation to go with the town manager's recommendation of the 1.56 shift for this year's.
Mr. Kratman, I think you have to read it with that percentage per the state.
Okay, one second, I'm just trying to bring it up.
I make a motion that the board adopts the, a minimum residential factor of 0.8885.
Thank you, I couldn't see it.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Can I have a second, roll call vote, Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes no, so it's four to one, and so it passes. Okay, so we have three more other, three other motions to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to not have a residential, not adopt a residential exemption.
I have a second by Ms. Stronach, roll call vote, Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well. Third motion to consider.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we do not adopt a small commercial exemption for fiscal year 2021.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Wellman, seconded by Ms. Stronach, roll call vote, Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, last but not least.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the board does not adopt a discount of up to 25% for property classified as open space.
I'll second that as well.
Motion is second, roll call vote, Ms. Stronach?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. Joanne, thank you very much, thank you very much, and please thank your staff, excellent job, thank you.
Thank you, thank you all, and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. All right, I'll just bring up the remaining agenda items for this evening. Actually, it's residents again, Jason, do we have any residents on the line?
No residents, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and proceed, and if residents call, that's fine. Mr. Montori, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just have a few items. First is in regard to appointing records access offices for the town. Under the, under the public records law, we need to appoint public records access offices, which I have, which we have in each department. With the retirement of Chief Sheen back in January, I haven't gotten around to appointing Chief Ryan Columbus as a records officer for the police department, and with Jan Cano taking over as council on aging director, I have not had a chance to bring her name forward to seek approval from the board to appoint her as a records office, access officer. So tonight, I'm bringing both names forward for the board's approval and appointment as records access officers.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Chief Ryan Columbus and Jan Cano as record access officers for the public records request for the town of Tuxbury.
Do I have a motion or a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Wellman, roll call vote, Ms. Stronach? Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well.
Then, Mr. Chairman, one last item, an invoice for town council in the amount of $2,337.50, and I would recommend approval.
So moved.
Do I have a motion or a second?
Second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kratman, Ms. Stronach? Thank, we might all, Ms. Wellman?
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick?
Aye.
Mr. Kratman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, anything else, Mr. Montori?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
You're saving everything for next week, we have a quick turnaround next Tuesday. Okay, very good. All right, good stuff, we have no minutes to, we have no minutes. How about board member reports, I don't know if we have Ms. Stronach back? Let's go, how about Ms. Wellman?
I have nothing further this evening, Mr. Chairman. Happy Thanksgiving.
That's a big one, that's a big one, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wellman, happy Thanksgiving to you. I'm all set, I have nothing to report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Brian Dick, cabo, Mr. Kratman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, last night I had a meeting with the economic development team. We've been looking at a number of ways to help the businesses in town, looking, discussing some of the governor's guidelines, coming up with ideas of how to promote businesses in the town. And we've been working forward with that, listening to what's happening in other communities, and a very productive meeting. We're going to keep working to come up with some recommendations and things we can do with the town. I had a meeting with the, yourself, the town manager, the assistant town manager, and our, and our town engineer, and came up with some ideas about putting a map together with the, with the recommendations on the committee of showing businesses and showing empty parcels and do those type of things. So we had productive meetings, we're going to keep promoting Tuxbury, why it's great to be here.
So we had productive meetings, uh, we're going to keep promoting Tewksbury, why it's great to be here. And, uh, we're going to get businesses up and running again. So, uh, that's what economic development. Uh, LRTA, I had a meeting last week, uh, we have a new executive director over there. Uh, we're in the process of finalizing his contract. And, uh, today I actually had the privilege of meeting with our town engineer, the, um, existing executive director and the, and the new executive director that's coming in. And we went to a number of places in Tewksbury, uh, and we're looking about, uh, adding additional bus shelters in the community where needed, uh, specifically down by where the senior center is. And, uh, with a newly reconstruction of down by Chandler and East Street, uh, I want to commend, um, Kevin Hardeman and town manager for, you know, uh, going for additional funding to find these things. They're going for grants to, uh, to get these things. And we're, we're working together with the LRTA to order them, work with the state hospital to see if we can get them in there. And, uh, we're also in looking at, um, relocating the bus route. We've been discussing it for a while. Uh, we're trying to think about moving the bus route that goes down East Street to, instead of continuing down East Street to Main Street, to have it take a left on Chandler Street to go up to the state hospital and then go down the rest of 38 to pick up those businesses. I think it would be a benefit to people going to the, uh, library. I think it'll be people going to the senior center and I think it'll pick up additional workers along, uh, Route 38, getting them to Gallagher Station, Wilmington Station. So, um, at particular times of the year, uh, the bus route through Route 38 is the number one traveled route for all the LRTA. So it's used quite frequently, there's a lot of workers that use it, there's a lot of kids that use it, there's a lot of seniors that do shopping with it. So, uh, I think it's beneficial that we help them find different ways of getting around. And, uh, I just want to thank everybody for helping us, you know, move forward and get these projects get going. Uh, and the only thing I also want to mention is, uh, when I stopped by town hall today, I saw the garden club outside decorating, uh, town hall. I want to thank them so much for putting up some of the stuff up there for the wreaths, making town hall look very festive. We have the holiday season coming up in front of us and they're doing a wonderful job. So I want to thank them for their time and commitment to the town of Tewksbury. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Good stuff, Mr. Kratman, good stuff. Um, I, how about Ms. Stronach, do we have Ms. Stronach back?
Yes, thank you, I'm sorry about that, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your patience. I have a couple of things that I would like to report on. First of all, um, the events committee will not be holding its annual tree lighting this year due to the COVID pandemic. Um, we're very disappointed that we are not going to be able to put that forward. But the town common will be lit up, so there will be a spirit in the area and we're pretty excited about that. I also want to thank Mr. Kratman for bringing up the garden club. They do a lot of work to make that place look festive and, um, I think that people need that jolt this year, so I appreciate those efforts as well. And we are coming upon the travel season where people are getting together with their families as well during the holiday season. And I noticed that the town manager provided us with information on COVID within our community. And unfortunately, we do seem to be on the rise, notably the area of ages 20 to 29 right now are our highest, um, peaks of positive COVID cases. I want to encourage that age group to, um, pay attention to the, um, surroundings of how they contract that disease and the virus and try to avoid it at all costs. I just want to make that clear because it is, I'm very concerned with the holidays coming up that, um, we'll continue to see that rise within our community, that then will infiltrate schools and businesses and have, um, a lot more work for Mr. Kratman and his economic development committee trying to find ways to alleviate the situation. So I just want to encourage people to do their due diligence in terms of that and thank everybody for their patience because like many, um, I am too fatigued with COVID. Um, so thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I wish everybody a thankful and, uh, blessed Thanksgiving. I am grateful to be a part of this community and grateful to serve with all of you. Thank you very much.
Good stuff, thanks, thanks, Ms. Stronach. So, uh, one more time and why not, so just happy Thanksgiving to all. And with that, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion or a second. Final roll call vote and I promise, Ms. Stronach, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ms. Wellman.
Aye.
Mr. Brian Dick.
Aye.
Mr. Kratman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, thank you very much, thank you guys.